All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order and can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, one nation under God with, I'm sorry, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I'm being interrupted. As usual. Okay. Um. Um, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to, just before we start the meeting, I just wanted to mention about obviously what's going on in Ukraine and as we're all watching in horror as this country is trying desperately to defend itself and to defend its democracy. And I wanted to say that, that I ordered the Ukrainian flag to be hung at half staff below the United States flag in front of Old Town Hall in solidarity with Ukrainian people. And I attended a rally last Saturday at the Ukrainian club in Southport with many Ukrainian American citizens and from our town and from surrounding towns to, to rally in support of them. And I just, you know, my heart just is breaking watching what's happening to these people. And I just want to ask if we could just have a moment of silence for that. Thank you.
Um, Brittany, just as a note, my, as I know, you know, my daughter is a journalist and two, she had three colleagues that were in a, basically they were shot up by the Russian military over the last couple of days in, in Ukraine, and she just got word that two of them have passed away. The on-air talent, they don't know his condition, but a longtime camera person and then a 24-year-old Ukrainian producer were both killed. So it's, it's truly horrific.
It's unbelievable.
Tom, I'm so sorry for that and just want to echo the just horrors and there are two Westport residents, at least as of last week, that were our journalists and we're over there, so. It just, it has tentacles and it reaches just far beyond what we're seeing on, on TV and it's, it's just, there are no words really.
Nope. Nope.
Um. Well, our hearts are definitely with them. Okay, our, our first item on the agenda is we have Gerald Foley and our parks and rec director, I believe Anthony Calabrese is on the line. Does any, does anyone who want to make a motion to waive the reading or I'd be happy to do that, it's up to you.
I'll move to waive the reading, yep. If you could just maybe talk broadly about what it is.
Right.
I'll move to waive the reading.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so this is, um, this is to enter into a contract on, on the, on the work that we that we already approved for Lake Monquegan. And this is to do the restoration of the beach area from the storm that happened. The structures, the stairs, the sidewalks concession building that were impacted by Hurricane Ida. And it's for, in, this contract is regarding not more than $63,925. And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, very good. Uh, who wants to, Gerald, uh, would you, well, Anthony, do you want to start off?
Sure, I don't mind at all. So with the help of the purchasing department, we put out an RFP to our short list of vendors for design engineer services. Of those, the one that came back with the best price was Race, which is the one that's sitting before you. We did meet with Race to go through the project and the expectations and they got, they understand the scope of the project and can meet our timelines and can fit this one into their current schedule and their price is what you guys see in front of you now, just under $64,000, which I should say we were carrying 100,000 for engineering services, so this came in under budget, which is always good to hear.
And Anthony, the total of this was somewhere around 500, 550,000, wasn't that right?
That's correct.
And what, what is the timeline, just so we're, just, just give us that real quick?
Yep, um, as soon as they have this part, we will put out the RFP for construction with hopes to get the lake open for Memorial Day. That is the ultimate goal, obviously, there's any kind of delay or weather or unforeseen circumstances, then that could potentially delay the opening of the lake. But I think we should be able to meet our timeline from our discussions with Race already.
Thank you, and if, if my colleagues don't mind, I've got another couple of quick questions here.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. The first item is you, you had said something, our, our short list of, of vendors that supply these services, which I'm assuming is fine and all that, but I just want to ask Mr. Foley, this is all above board with our RFP process and our purchasing policy, is that correct? Can you confirm that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so everybody who should have had the opportunity to bid on this.
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Baldwin, there's no problems that you see with this contract, you signed off on it, I'm assuming?
That's correct, we had one very brief back and forth and it, it's been amended to my satisfaction.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have nothing further, yeah.
Just, just for the record, it's, it's slightly different from the version that is in your packet because those changes were agreed upon just earlier today, but the final version incorporates the, the amended terms and will be executed upon your approval.
Okay.
Um, is there any further questions? Okay, all in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, the next item and several items are regarding our school district contracts, excuse me.
I was going to waive the reading of the remaining items.
Okay, very good, um, is that?
Or move to waive the reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, before we start off this item, I just want to bring up, I know that there's, there was some discussion recently at a, either at a Board of Education meeting and that subsequently at a Board of Education Finance Policy Meeting or Finance Subcommittee Meeting regarding some delays that the school district was experiencing with purchasing items. And so I just wanted to clarify some things, I know there was some chatter on social media that the town was holding up the roof project that's on the agenda today, and that is not true. The roof project, the RFPs all came in above the amount that was allocated for the roof. And obviously, the town cannot enter into a contract for an amount that is above what was already approved by town bodies. So there was a lot of work that had to be done regarding value engineering and things of that nature that Gerald had to perform to ensure that we were in compliance with the amount that was approved. So that did take some time. And I know there's some overall discussions regarding purchasing. And I understand it is a complicated situation. We, not only does the school district find sometimes it's frustrating, so as do some department heads. And I recently had the town CEO, Tom Bremer, write an email addressing some of these issues to the superintendent and to the finance chair of the committee, just explaining that, excuse me, that obviously the town follows very stringent purchasing policies that are established under the Board of Finance. And since I took over, we are very stringent about following these policies to the letter of the law in light of what happened under the prior administration. So we're just, you know, doing our due diligence, I realize that sometimes this takes time and it's not always as quick as we'd like. And so I just wanted to say this in public because I know there's some, there were some questions about this. But the town is doing its best and it's why we added a, a person last budget season to the purchasing department to ensure that we had more staff on hand because they do handle tremendous amount of activity. Everything we vote on, non-reoccurring projects, capital projects, items that are in the budget and every, average everyday items that happen throughout the town that need to go through this department, so I just wanted to clarify for anyone who had questions regarding that because I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we have to follow policies, we're a municipality and we are spending taxpayer money and we have to be very careful about how we do spend that money. So I just wanted to say that.
Can, can I ask a follow-up question because this is something that confuses me? You, you mentioned the value engineering. Since the bids came in higher, what then is the process? If, because isn't it the building committee, committee that puts together the metrics for what goes out for bid? I, I'm just concerned, I'm confused about the process then because I don't understand how it gets engineered or maneuvered if it's the building committee that decides what?
Well, the item was sent to us and we approved a specific amount to town bodies.
Right.
Then it goes to purchasing and then they put out an RFP based on those specs. The, now the, the policies where the people came back to bid on this project and they were, they exceeded the amount approved. And Gerald, you can speak a little bit more about how you worked to get those figures down into the amount that was approved.
But that's right there, it's also not just the figures, it's the process for changing the specs because I assume that that's what has to happen, so I don't know if it's just a Gerald question or if there's back and forth.
No, I don't think they changed the specs. Who, who would like to, Gerald, would you like to address this question?
I could start, yeah, so what happens is we had, we had multiple firms bid on this project and so all the bids came in over the allotted budget. It was 2,999,000 and change. And so the particular, this particular project had, had two projects in it. They had the Roger Ludlow Middle School, which was the full roof replacement. And then it had design work related to the Roger Sherman School. So anyway, long and short of it was, is what we did is, is the, there's a building committee that oversees this, it's a special projects standing building committee, so the project was brought before them. They, they had, they had a concern about voting on it because it was in fact over budget. So Sal's on here and he could talk more to this. But what we ended up doing was we went to the low bidder, which is a company called Silk Town. And we had, we had a scope review meeting with them basically to look at the project. And I wouldn't say so much changing the scope, but to look at the project to see what items that they could, we'll call, it's a loose term called value engineering, but in essence, you're not necessarily changing the scope of the project, but you're looking to make subtle things that potentially could save the town money. Now, that, that process took longer, much longer than I thought it was going to take. I think it took in the neighborhood of three weeks. But anyway, as a result of all that, back to your question about the, being overseen by a building committee, those value engineering items have to go back to the building committee to vote on. So puts us Ben back into a quandary because we're still over budget. So when I had asked for the schools basically to give a supplemental account, so you'll see on the action, there's two accounts listed, one account is the capital account and the secondary account is coming from the school's budget. So that's kind of gets us over that issue with the, with the, the funding component of it. And again, those, those, all those components took much longer than I had thought. The other piece too is, is that in the midst of all this, we've been in discussions with Silk Town. So they knew early on that we were going forward with an award to them. We've had multiple correspondence with them, they're up, they've done some work on the roofs. But again, it just, it took a little bit longer than, than all of us anticipated. And then the other piece was, is I think in the month of February, there was only one meeting with the Board of Selectmen and so it ended up that there was a little bit of a hiccup in that month. And then this month, again, so that we're not losing more time, we asked for a special meeting. The issue being is, is that in this time with all the issues with the, so they call supply chain issues, it's harder for these companies to get materials on hand. And so what we want to do is again, stay ahead of the curve. So that's why the, the whole special meeting component puts into place. So hopefully I've answered and Sal could chime in because I may have, I may have misspoken on a couple of things and Sal, Sal and/or Angeles are both here, so they could, they could chime in.
I, I'd be happy to if for the first select one.
Go right ahead, Tom.
The, there was one thing that Gerald did miss say, the second project in the bond fund is designed for McKinley Elementary Roof, not, not Roger Sherman. The value engineering that was done is being done so that we have, number one, live within our bonded amount and also have enough to take care of any contingencies that might come up, any unforeseens. Not that we're expecting much on a relatively newer building compared to our other facilities, it's in the 20-year-old range. And we built it, you know, many people that are still around today remember when it was built, so, and we actually have documents, so. The, as Gerald said, the supply line is messed up for everybody, it's messed up for computer chips for cars, it's the gasoline, you name it. And one of the big ones is insulation for roofing projects. Not only roofing projects, we also had a major delay for our walk-in refrigerator at Mill Hill because we couldn't get the foam to make the refriger, walk-in refrigerator.
So, so Sal, just cutting to the chase here. The, first of all, thanks for answering the question, Nancy. Nancy, I, I know from my past experience, when they do these quote-unquote value engineering on bigger projects, typically what happens is they go back, they find out that they were underestimating the cost, they go to the building committee and then the building committee works with the outside professionals to decide what's going to get valued engineered. So the building committee does in fact, at least in my past experience, sign off on the, the quote-unquote value engineering aspects of it, and in fact, and I don't know of any instances where this happened, if it should in fact impact the, the ed specs and Sal would be better, you know, Sal would be better able to define this, the building committee would in fact go back to the Board of Education and say, here's the issue, we need to address the ed specs. Then the ed specs, if they needed to be adjusted, would, they would go back to the building committee, the building committee would make sure that the value engineered area took that into consideration and then they would off to the races. So there is, at least from my past experience, and Sal, please tell me if I'm wrong, there's a pretty thorough review of anything that's quote-unquote value engineered, is that fair?
That, that is a fair statement. Luckily, the, the value engineering items that have come out do not require ed spec changes.
Yeah.
We will present these to the building committees with recommendations from the architect slash engineer as to which ones we believe, we being myself for construction for the district and, and the engineer saying that these are worthwhile changes. What they'll do is give us enough latitude to have a contingency on that funding. So, you know, the number that you're approving today after the next standing special projects building committee will be, be a lower amount. We'll, we'll make more room so that we can make sure we don't exceed the funding.
And, Sal, go ahead Nancy.
I was just going to say, and Angeles, all this lines up with, with what your understanding and process and all of this in terms of the, the adjustments, the.
That is correct, yep, we, Sal and I worked very closely to get these through.
So not that I don't, I just wanted to hear it from Angeles as well, I don't mean to challenge what you're saying, I just, we have both of you in the room, so to speak.
Yeah, so here's the, here's the thing, so I like the first select woman I, I saw on social media and a few emails that went around some type of criticism of the, of the purchasing department and working with the Board of Education. There's a few moving pieces here, as I understand it. The first one, as it relates to this roof item, it wasn't necessarily that the purchasing department of the town did anything wrong, it's in fact that the bids and the estimates or the original estimates were wrong as compared to the bids that came back. And then there needed to be this quote-unquote value engineering process to give, bring the work back within approved budgetary amounts in order for it to come before this board, is that fair to say?
Very fair to say.
And then what happened is, and of course the challenges, and I wouldn't want to be in your gentleman shoes, any of your gentleman shoes, the supply chain issues that are impacting all aspects of the economy are also causing you agita because particularly when it comes to schools, we've got that defined window of typically the summer months in order to get these things addressed and, and with the supply chain issues and getting things backed up, that would be a problem if you missed that timeframe, is that fair to say as well?
Yes, we have the 10 weeks of summer to do these projects.
Right, because what I see here is, you know, in, in fact, we all, or I'll speak for Nancy and I and forgive me Nancy for speaking for you, but we just got a note, you know, late last week that this was a rush item to have this meeting and of course, we accommodated it to put this meeting together to keep you guys on, on schedule for that, to the extent that anything can be controlled with these external supply chain issues. And my understanding is, in any instances, we've done that, we've hold those special meetings or what have you to accommodate the requests, is that fair to say?
It is fair to say, we, we do appreciate you holding the special meeting so that we can keep this project moving in our small time window.
Yeah, the other thing I know that's going on is, I know that as a result of what happened with the fill pile and, and the result of some of the alleged criminality that took place, is we actually brought in our outside audit firm under the auspices of the Board of Finance. I actually was on that board when we did it and asked them to conduct an audit and a review of all the policies and procedures and what could be tightened up. And one of the things that came back from that was a, a more strict adherence to the purchasing poly, policy as it existed and B, an actual deep dive review and rewrite of that policy in order to tighten that up. And I think that has been ongoing. And that is what the first select woman was alluding to when she said, we're really been eyes dotted, t's crossed and tightening this up, working again with the outside firm as well as the, the Board of Finance, fair to say?
Yes, and the purchase, and the purchasing department.
Right, and then I'm hearing some static on the line over the last week, which was news to me that there's also a purchasing policy within the Board of Education that might be at odds with the purchasing policy. Not just the new purchasing policy for the town, but the existing purchasing policy for the town. And I think that's caused a little bit of confusion in the last few weeks, right?
Yes.
So now are you guys meeting with the town in order to make sure that that policy is consistent with the town policy because I think we do have to be governed by what the Board of Finance says as well as by what the town charter says.
So we are, we are working, as you know, Mr. Bremer let up a purchasing
Yeah.
Committee and then the Board of Finance hired our outside auditor to write up a policy and that policy was done and we met several weeks back, maybe about three or more now, all of us in a room, Gerald, Chairwoman of the Board of Finance, Chris DeWitt, my team, Anne Santafani went through the whole thing, talking about areas where the charter need to be infused in it, make sure it was in line with the way things Gerald actually does and, and so now Santafani is redoing some pieces of it to come back. But we noticed quite a bit in the policy that, that the Board of Ed was exempt from a lot of this, which didn't really make sense because a lot of those expenditures are pretty big. So then, so I, we are working, this policy committee is working with the Board of Ed and with us to merge all of these policies to make sure everybody is following the charter, we're all doing things the way we're supposed to be doing them. And so when that product is finalized, we'll have a more improved purchasing policy that I hope will, will allow us to continue to move business because obviously there's just so much that runs through the town, we want to make sure everything is being handled appropriately. But we also don't want to slow the progress of any projects that we're working on regardless of their school district project or town project, so that's where we are on that, but I just wanted to have that discussion on, you know, we have quite a few items we need to discuss.
It would be great to get a top level at, at an appropriate moment, obviously not today, a top level update on sort of where we are with that procedure, those policies where they align, I just think a public conversation at the board level would be helpful.
Well, the, the, again, the Board of Finance sets the purchasing policy, not, not me.
No.
Board of Selectmen.
No, I understand that, just to get an update of what, since so much of what we comes before us is impacted, it would just be great to have a top level update.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy, you know, when they reconvene and have some semblance of, I know they're supposed to meet after they come back, they're supposed to then meet with school administration to go over their section, so there's still some, a lot of moving parts before we get to a final piece. As you're, did you want to say something?
Hi, just in terms of purchasing, and I don't want to hijack your agenda for another, you know, a purchasing discussion, but I would just, to your point that you met with the Board of Finance, that it might have been helpful if the Board of Education or central office was at somebody's purchasing meetings, just to speed the process along. I think that administration and the board is, is just used to things moving a little bit quicker. So there is a little bit of a learning curve in terms of what the expectation is and what the turnaround is for certain projects. Whether it be special education providers, you know, that need to be paid in a timely fashion or in cases of building projects. You know, I, I appreciate Mr. Barbieto and Mr. Foley and Mr. Papa George's work on this. But from the board level, you know, we approved funding for this project back in September with the understanding that we really needed to fast track this, understanding that there was going to be supply chain issues and really wanted to get this out to bid before the end of the year, appreciating that costs potentially could rise. And here we are, costs did go up and that seems to have stalled the process. There is a little bit of frustration, but I, I do appreciate being, continuing the conversation. And if there's any documented purchasing policy or draft that hasn't been forwarded to the superintendent, I would just request that it be sent to him. If I have to make that request through the Chair of the Board of Finance, I will do that as well. So thank you for the conversation and we'll give you back your agenda, Ms. Kapchuk.
Thank you. Appreciate the floor. So just, just to, just to be clear though, the town is participating in the Board of Finance's, you know, I tried to have us all work together from the beginning and that didn't seem to be working, so the Board of Finance has their policy committee. And again, they, they are driving the bus, so to speak, and they are plugging in the town Gerald's input into the policy that Mr. Santafani wrote, that they hired him to do. And then they did say during the meeting on our town side, you know, that they were going to reach out to the Board of Ed. So you should probably most likely, definitely reach out to, to Lori and just, you know, offer, they did say they met at some point, I don't know when they did and I believe they would probably be doing that again. But that's really, that's not my area. Reach out to the.
And I, and I definitely will, and I know there have been some meetings that I have just, you know, other members of the Board of Education have been participating in, so I again, don't want to hijack the discussion, but I do appreciate that this is an ongoing discussion and we'll let you get back to the projects before you.
Thank you. All right, so, okay, we're back to our original item, item number four. And this item is regarding the roof that we were speaking about at Roger. And this item is regarding the roof that we were speaking about at Roger Lubble Middle School. And this is, um, this is the contract to enter into the proposed contract that our, uh. Purchasing, uh, department worked on with the RFPs and that our town attorney reviewed. So, um, it has been reviewed. Um, as, as all of our contracts are. And, um, so this is, um, in amount, in this contract is regarding, um, in an amount not to exceed. About $3,100,000. And, uh, on the agenda, as we waived, waived the reading of the minutes, the agenda has the account number and all of that. Information. So we already have a motion on the floor to approve, um, at a second. And so I'll open it up for discussions on the actual item.
I just want to, go ahead.
I just that they were, my questions were really answered in the procedural discussion we just had. So I don't have any questions on the remaining items, I don't believe, but. I guess anything is possible once Mr. Flynn starts talking.
Thanks for that. Um, a quick question. I, I just want to note, um, Mr. Foley and Mr. Baldwin, my standard questions is follow the appropriate RFP process. And the contracts have been reviewed by counsel. Can you both just confirm that?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll start. This is Gerald Foley. I just wanted to give you also just a little background too on this whole bid. Since I've gotten here, this is the earliest bid that I can think of that we've actually put out and actually got back for a roof. As a point of reference, last year when we went out for the, the Burr project, we were executing contracts. I believe it was on the middle of June. So we're actually much further ahead this year than we were. Again, it wasn't perfect, wasn't a perfect process. But we're three months ahead from the, there, another roof that we did on a school last year. So just as a point of reference, just so, you know, because I know everyone keeps talking about delays, but this one, this one actually went pretty quick. Uh, again, comparison to last year's and even for years prior. But to answer the questions about the bidding, yeah, everything, uh, we, we put it out to bid, publicly bid it. We had multiple companies bid. We selected the low bidder. We presented the, our award recommendation through special project standing building committee. They approved the award. Uh, again, the, the only issue they had was the issue with the funding and that Sal has talked about. So I'm, I'm comfortable that the, the project, the project and the process were fine and, and met the town's standards.
And this is Attorney Jim Baldwin, and the answer is yes to this contract as well as the others that are before you.
Thank you. So we don't ask that again. Um, is there any additional questions on the contract on this item?
No, I've read the backup and, and all that, so I'm fine.
Awesome. Um, okay. I, I apologize for the first item. I didn't open it up for public comment. Um, and I should have, and I apologize. Um, I'm going to open it up now. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this item, item number four. On the agenda. I see none. Um, okay. We're back to the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is item number five. We did waive the reading, although this is, um. Regarding, um, a contract with Silver Petroselyan Associates for architectural design. To facilitate toilet room renovations at Fairfield Butto High School. And it's not to exceed the amount of two, two, 219, 300. And the information, this is the capital non-reoccurring that we approved, but this is for the contract. And so can I get a motion to approve this item?
So, so moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. And again, this was, as Attorney Baldwin said, reviewed by him and the, uh, proper process was followed by our purchasing department.
Thank you for that. And I do have a couple of questions on this.
Sure.
Um, number one, it's, I must say, it's still, um. Amazes me how much bathrooms cost. Uh, number two, I, it cracks me up that we're referring to it as a toilet room. Uh, and, and, and number three, um, the way this is written, quite frankly, confused me a little bit. Is this 219 for the full renovation or is this 219 for the design and construction documents?
Design and construction.
So the entire renovation of these rooms is going to cost how much? Approximately?
Roughly, um, so this, so typically the architects come in between five and 10% of the anticipated cost. So it's going to be substantially more. So what you see before you is just that is, this is just the design components.
And remind me, how many bathrooms is this? How many toilets is this?
So Sal, Sal can give you a no reveal.
The number seems high because the first part of the.
Please get closer to the microphone, Sal. Thank you.
Turn my microphone up. Sorry about that.
No problem.
The, uh, the design, uh, will end up cost, be costing less than that. What we have done is. Included every bathroom in the facility within the review scopes, because we want to make sure that. Not only what you see is okay, the infrastructure that's concealed below the floor, in the walls and all that, we're going to be doing some. Uh, destructive and non-destructive testing of, uh, pipes and drainage lines and what have you. Uh, once we do that initial investigation, we will then re-scope the project. Down to something other than every last bathroom or toilet room, uh, use of.
So is this more, is this more not just the design, but is this more a review of what needs to be done? So this isn't just a design. It's basically understanding the state of play and then determining a game plan going forward. Is that the?
Well, we, we do know that we need the, the, uh, what we'll call the multi-fикcher rooms, uh, toilet rooms. Those are in dire need of work. There are a lot of other smaller facilities throughout the, the, uh, facility. That we do not want to overlook while we're undergoing what we know will be an extensive renovation of those major multi-fикcher bathrooms. The first step will be to do an analysis and an investigation of, as you said, the state of play. What do we have? And what is its condition? And then we'll move forward with the design from there. And once we, when we get to the point that we'll bid it out, we will bid it out in, uh, logical phases. Uh, so that we can control the pricing.
So Sal, that's what I want to hear. So this thing has been approved from a financial standpoint, and now we're looking at the contracts. Are you changing these contracts based? To be different than what was originally approved? When we approved these things as bodies, was it no? And stated that, oh, by the way, we were going to re, do a review. Of all the bathroom facilities, all the toilet room facilities, both what I used to, I used to hear referred to as gang bathrooms. Versus kind of the individual or faculty bathrooms or whatever, whatever the heck they are. Um, was that explained to everybody?
I, I wasn't at that funding meeting. Uh, Angeles probably was. I'll, I'll swing this over to Angeles to, uh, answer that question.
So yes, the, the intent was to remodel those bathrooms throughout the district, throughout that building in particular. Um, that being said, when we started digging into it deeper, we've realized that. This isn't so much just of a remodel, but it's a, let's look at the original piping that's still running in the walls. What's going on with those? We've, we've identified issues where, uh, a broken, for instance, a broken pipe in a boys' bathroom that feeds a sink. Required us to, uh, in order to get the water shut off in a timely manner, bring out the fire department, open up the wall, cut the pipe and. Put a, basically a freeze situation in so that we could put a valve on, because there's no valves in there. So yes, the intent was to look at all the bathrooms.
I, I, yeah, but it, but I don't want to know the intent. I want to know what was explained to the town bodies. And here's what I don't want to have happen. I don't want to have happen that these, that you've taken money and put it towards this here. And overfunded this. And then when we go to the renovations of the bathrooms, you're cut short on funding. I want to know that we've covered the funding for what the town bodies actually approved.
So when we went for the funding, we talked about looking at all the bathrooms in the building, which we are still moving forwards to do. And we are going to look at, like Sal said, that, as you refer to them, the gang bathrooms. And the remodel to get them the code, to get them to work properly. Some of the smaller, single-use, one-person bathrooms. May not be remodeled, but they may not need to be remodeled based on they're still meeting code, the piping is still working.
I understand that. What I want to make sure is we don't get into a situation where you got approval from town bodies to do one scope of work. You've expanded the scope of work on this element, and then you're going to cut short to do what the town bodies approved getting done. I want to make sure that what we approve getting done gets done.
Yeah, we, we are not anticipating doing that. We, like I said, we are looking at all the bathrooms. We will, all the gang bathrooms that will need to be updated, we will be updating them. And that's what we had said was that the student bathrooms would be looked at, evaluated, and any work needed to be done in there, we would move that forwards to bring them up to code.
So on the original internal documents to say as a complete funding mechanism for this, is this within the budget for that amount?
We anticipate this to be within that budget still, yes.
What was that budget? If we, I mean, you're saying here it was 219, 500, 300.
I have it in front of me. It's $2,111,000.
I understand that, but was this part broken out separately?
Yes. Yeah. So there, there was a line item on that. Bear with me one second. So the.
The amount that was in the funding request for architectural services was $234,600.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any further, um. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I'm good.
Seeing none, um, I'll open it up if there's anyone in the public, although I don't see any, um, members of the public on. Um, I will open it up for public comment. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, um, we waived the reading. This is for a contract. With Savmore Cooling and Heating to provide labor material equipment. Um, to perform a replacement of a rooftop HVAC unit at Fairfield Ward High School. In the amount to not to exceed, uh, $1,026, um. For the entire project. And this, uh, was reviewed, uh. Carefully by our purchasing department and the town attorney reviewed the contract. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it. Very good. Um, uh, discussion on the item.
Just right now we have number six and seven before us. And they're both rooftop units. I'm assuming are these separate you rooftop units? Why don't you got, can you guys kind of walk us through what's going on here, please?
Sure. Yes. Sure. Can you give me just one second? I'm trying to confirm. This is the Ward Cafeteria.
Yes.
So that is not a replace. I, I apologize. I didn't catch that in the, uh. Agenda. That is not a replacement of a unit. That is, we are adding air conditioning to the Ward Cafeteria. This was a prior approved. Capital project that we went out to bid for the, um, architectural services. And now we're going out to bid for the actual. Save more to do the, uh, in, install of the air conditioning at Fairfield Ward High School Cafeteria.
Okay, and this.
Can I get a, a motion to amend, um, the language to remove the word replacement? In the item?
And replace it with installation?
Correct.
That amendment, I will move.
Nancy?
Yep, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, the item is now amended.
So Angeles, thank you for the explanation. Quick question. When was this approved? Was this last year?
I don't have my.
Previous, this was the previous year.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn, this was the 2021 Capital Projects request.
So it's, it's coming up now. Why? And, and not earlier? I'm just asking. Cause we just had a.
The pro, the, the process for getting the, the. I'll, I'll, I'll swing that to Gerald. Uh, we, we, it, there was a couple of different steps to get to the. Uh, final engineer for this project. We did that. Uh, we bid it out. Took, uh, took some time for evaluation. Then we had to turn around the contracts. Uh, and that has been going around for, uh, a little longer than we expected. And we're here now. That's the best I can do. It, it took this long to get designed. Out the bid. Contracts reviewed.
But the reality is this wasn't going to get done last summer anyway, because you were just in the.
No.
The process. So this isn't delayed or anything from the standpoint of installation. It's going to happen.
No, it's, it's not. It's, it's much like, again, the roof projects, you know, there's this.
Yeah.
There's a certain amount of, uh, uh, back work that has to be done before, you know, you're actually seeing it in front of you for that final approval. Right. And it can take, depending on the project, it can take, uh, four months. It could take, uh, 14 months. And, and this is, this is the one that had kind of had a little bit of a longer, uh, timeline.
Um, there was, just so you know, there was a lot of design work, a lot of different going back and forth with, uh, approaches to handling this. There was also, you know, because it is a large open area, there was a lot of different ways to look at it, a lot of different ways to handle it. So. It was, it was, it took a unusually longer than normal design look to, to come up with the aspect and the design that we were comfortable moving forwards with.
Okay. And this has nothing to do with the one on the, on the, uh, number seven, correct?
Correct. That is a separate project.
So yeah, so I'll, I'll chime in. So salad talk. So for this project that's before you, we had to hire a firm to do the engineering component of it. So there was a new firm that we used, uh, took a little bit longer than we all anticipated to get the design out from them. Once we got the design back, we put it out to bid. Uh, once the bids came back, um, again, it took a little bit longer to do our valuation of the bids. And at the same time, we asked the same company that we hired as the engineer to assist us with the contract. That took a little bit longer than we all anticipated. Um, so long and short, it was a lot of little pieces that kind of stitched together that made the process longer. Um, in regard to the comment about the replacement, so the, the unit that's there now is basically called a heating ventilation unit. So I considered it a replacement because there's a unit there and we're taking a heating and ventilation unit off the roof and putting on a. Heating, ventilation and air conditioning. So that's why I use the word replacement. But it's, you know, I guess it's semantics in terms of how you want to phrase it.
Okay.
Is there any additional questions from the body on this item?
Not for me.
No.
And again, I will open it up for public comment, but I, no one's on, so, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the next item, item number seven, um. This item, uh, requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. Uh, this is to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled the Resolution Appropriating $1,094,485. For the cost of replacement of the HVAC rooftop units at Fairfield Ward High School's Fitz House. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second. I will open it up. Discussion, uh, by the body.
Thank you. Do you want to step us through it either Angeles or Sal?
So I can give you a quick overview. This is, uh, if you're familiar with Ward High School, the Fitz House. Uh, wing of that building is an air-conditioned wing. Uh, it's a two-story air-conditioned wing, I should say. It has four rooftop units on it. Uh, one of which was replaced a few years back, and we now have three more that need to be replaced. Working with some engineers and looking at costs, we felt it was prudent to put them together as one project to do all three because of value engineering. The word is thrown around a lot tonight. Uh, would require one crane rollout, one, one company. So there was, there was. Value in doing them together as opposed to trying to get them out since they're all in about the same age. They're all failing. since they're all in about the same age, they're all failing. One of them actually, since this report that you were looking at has gone out, has failed at this point and will not be starting this spring. But the other two will hopefully be able to maintain at least a decent temperature within the area. So we are looking to move forwards with this quicker than not. Um, that being said, I don't want you to be surprised because this project and this contract will probably be coming before you around this time next year. By the time we, we do not anticipate being able to get this done at this time over this coming summer, between the delay in manufacturing and supplies. And also by the time we go out to bid, not that, that's wholly ass, but design engineer, uh, go out to bid and come back, it would, it would close that window for us for the summer. And this work, because again, it does require a four-hundred-ton crane to lift these units off and onto the roof, that's something we wouldn't do during the school year when there's occupants in the building. So we're targeting a, hopefully a spring or a shutdown springtime to get this project underway.
Okay. Thank you. Can I, um, I'll defer to Nancy if she's got any questions or Brenda and then.
Go, go ahead.
What's the, um, how old are the units that you're replacing?
Uh, approximately nineteen ninety-one, they were installed.
So almost thirty years?
Yes.
Thirty years. How long's the, if you can, and mind you, we got five hundred and fifty pages of backup here. But, um, so it's hard to get through it all in, you know, seventy-two hours or what have you. But how, um, how long are the bonds that you're asking for in this? Are these twenty-year bonds?
This would be a twenty-year bond, yes.
Okay. And bond council has reviewed this, Mr. Baldwin, and there's no issues with the four? It's the standard form of our bond, I would assume?
I, I can't speak to that directly, but, uh, I assume that's the case. Maybe someone else on this call can, can.
I can speak to it. Uh, Mr. Flynn, this is Jared Schmidt.
Hey, Jared.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, we had, uh, Bond Council actually drafted this resolution. It's a twenty-year resolution. The, the anticipated life is again, about thirty years, similar to the, what we got out of the first. I appreciate that. Somehow things never last as long as the original ones, I get it. But, uh, I appreciate it very much. Thank you. No, that'll be my questions on this item.
Thank you. Fitz House, by the way, was the only house at Ward that was air-conditioned when I went there. And I only had one class in Fitz House. Anyway, I thought I'd just mention that for fun. All right, if there's no other.
I, I just want to remind everybody, because I think for people listening, the HVAC situation, it's so much more than just keeping kids cool. You know, it's air quality and, and other things that go into it. So I think it's important to remember that we're not just investing in, in comfort of the students, obviously important on the hottest days, but, but it's about air quality and our, uh, for security reasons, not being able to open windows, et cetera. So it's an important investment.
So if there's, uh, no further, uh, discussion on this item, I will say again, if there's any public who would like to comment, I know, don't see any public. But I do want to open that up and I see none. Back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Well, I would like to thank the board for, uh, taking the time to, uh, put together this special meeting or to be available for the special meeting on these projects and contracts. And, um, if there's no further, uh, discussion, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, Christine.
Sure, go ahead, Chris. You're on mute, you're on mute, Christine. I can't hear you.
We got a motion in it, okay.
I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, she says thank you. Okay. All right, everyone, we have a motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye, now.